Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the April 25th Meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Genther?
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Mary Waite.
Here.
Kathleen Ammaral.
Here.
John Noons.
Yep.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
I'll remind everyone that this meeting is going, is being livestreamed via the DHS TV Media YouTube Channel. Please silence your cell phones for those members who are here with us in the audience. This meeting will be rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 9 on Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00, Friday and 6:00, Saturday at 8:00, and Sunday at 2:00. It will also be rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 18 on Monday and Saturday at 9:00 and Thursday at 3:00. We're going to take a few things out of order this evening because we have some schoolkids here who need to get home and do some schoolwork and study for class. So we are going to skip the Superintendent's Certificate of Academic Excellence for our next meeting. And we will start with presentations from the Quinn Elementary School Spotlight on Kids. Dr. Gifford, would you like to introduce?
I know tonight Mr. Granfield was not feeling well, so we have Ms. Yovalovitch, I always say it wrong. We'll call her Ms. Y. And Ms. Thomas here, Assistant Principals to, and a lot of kids. So it looks like we're going to have a good presentation.
Good evening, everyone. We wanted to start by thanking you for this opportunity to spotlight our amazing students at Quinn. My name is Stephanie Yarmolovich.
And I'm Audra Thomas, and we're both the Assistant Principals. Unfortunately, Mr. Granfield, like Dr. Gifford said, wasn't able to come, but he is supporting us right now from home, I'm sure. So tonight, some of our 5th graders are here to bring the process of writing to life for all of you because it's a spotlight on kids and what they do every day. They've worked very hard throughout the school year researching, drafting their ideas, writing, integrating technology, publishing their final products, and sharing them not only with their classmates and their teachers, but also with their families at home.
For our Spotlight on Kids tonight, our 5th grade students have created a presentation that will hopefully persuade you to take their side. And if not, it'll at least give you something to think about. We have a few 5th graders here with us, as you can see, and they're representing the entire grade level, a grade level who worked collectively to create this project. So we are excited to see what you think. Here we go.
Good evening. We are 5th graders from Quinn Elementary, and we are happy to be here to showcase some of our hard work.
In the following slide, you will see the steps we took to complete the following project. But first, let's introduce ourselves. My name is Logan Francisco.
My name is Addison Thomas.
My name is Ella Torres.
My name is Leila Fay.
My name is Kedzie Calabrese.
My name is Spencer Vio.
My name is Violet Hill.
And my name is Audrey Astegi.
The unit of writing we worked on during this time was a research-based argument essay.
We were required to read a, sorry. We were required to read a variety of articles that discussed whether or not snow days should be virtual.
After doing some research and identifying our strongest evidence, we were required to develop a draft of an argument essay on this issue.
We had to build a powerful argument to support our claim. In doing so, we had to evaluate arguments in the perspective of authors.
With this new information, we developed a stronger second draft. Should snow days be virtual? This draft included three reasons to support our argument.
Our goal was to write for real-life purposes and audiences. You, our school committee, please enjoy the following video.
Have you ever witnessed a snow day? Well, if you have, you can agree that it's an awesome day.
You are wide awake, rushing out the door, still putting your boots on, just to play outside in the snow. You probably stayed there for hours and hours on end all day.
Now imagine, instead of rushing out the door with excitement, you probably walk over to your combe to begin the virtual work for the day while you watch the snow falling outside your window.
Side picture, right? Well, this is the reality for some students who have virtual snow days.
Snow days should not be virtual because some students may lose access to digital work. Students have already lost a lot due to the pandemic, and most parents would prefer that their child participate in a traditional snow day.
While virtual learning may have its advantages, technology is not always the most reliable, making traditional snow days a better option.
One reason technology proves to be unreliable is power outages.
If a student's device shuts down or gets kicked off of the Google Meet or Zoom, the student isn't learning and could fall behind on work.
Another issue students face with technology is poor internet connection.
Even if a student's home does not suffer a power outage, the internet during a snowstorm could easily go out. Lastly, technology could prove to be an issue because the student's device may malfunction.
A problem might occur with the audio or video on their device, making it difficult for a student to learn.
Another reason why snow days should be kept traditional is because students have already lost a lot due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Kids have lost friendships and family members.
Kids have also lost some of their social skills.
Keeping traditional snow days allows for some normalcy in students' lives.
Some families with busy schedules actually get a little time to spend together during snow days and boost family relationships.
Students should have the opportunity to disconnect and be kids.
Students have already lost out on so much. Putting on to traditional snow days allows students to keep that element of surprise of no school.
Lastly, research shows that most parents would like their children to have the experience of a traditional snow day.
There's been a lot of focus on closing the educational gaps, and some may feel that using a snow day as a virtual day can help to do so. However, others believe that students need a chance to just be a kid.
Evidence suggests that many parents would simply rather have their children not long into a virtual day.
In the New York Times article, "Should There Still Be Snow Days?", it states Sarah Allen, a parent in Kensington neighborhood of Brooklyn, said the streets near her home are coded. Her four children will not be attending classes as usual. Ms. Allen is certainly not the only parent who feels this way.
If parents are going to declare their own snow day, it can be argued that school districts should cancel as teachers would now have to catch those kids up who did not attend.
The magic and the excitement of a snow day is something every student should experience.
Virtual learning may be a great tool, but it doesn't replace the learning experiences that take place within a physical classroom. Students should experience a fun-filled snow day, and most parents would agree.
In conclusion, snow days should not be virtual because students may lose access to digital work. Students have already lost a lot due to the pandemic, and most parents would prefer that their children participate in a traditional snow day.
So, thank you very much. As you can say, see, a lot of work went into this presentation. And this is what they do during a regular school year. So this wasn't something that we put together just for the school committee, the boys and girls in 5th grade. And in a lot of our grades at Quinn School and across the district, work really hard to put presentations like this together. And I think they did a pretty awesome job. And I, we'd be remiss if we didn't also mention their classroom teachers. We have three of them here today. Mrs. Rosa, Ms. Saltmash, and Mr. Bowman have come to support the kids. Does anyone have any questions?
Any comments or questions? Mr. Oliver.
I'll just stop by saying what a wonderful job you all did. So I have to ask, were these, a lot of these your ideas? Was this all student-driven? Or did the, did the teachers kind of give you some, some ideas, some hints? You just come up to the microphone. Because it sounded like these are all your ideas. I could be wrong.
The teachers did help with a little bit, but it was mostly student-driven, yeah.
That's awesome. And you, you folks made a great case to keep snow days the way they are. So thank you all very much.
Mr. Noons.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Fantastic job. I mean, being a little bit older than you guys, I can remember when I was in grade school, we used to listen for the air raid siren to go off. And that was, that was the, that was the cancellation of school type of deal. So, but I totally loved, you know, the logic you put behind it and what you looked at and, you know, the different pros and cons of, of being there. And that's absolutely wonderful. So, nice job.
Thank you, Ms. Ammaral.
Just as Mr. Noons says, a real fantastic job. I loved how it was put together. I love the drawings throughout as well. And I'm, am I correct to say, are some of those drawings actual student drawings? Or? Oh, no? They were great. But, yeah, no, great job. You made a great case. And if you're asking me my favorite thing about a snow day, I concur that we keep them traditional. You made a great case, but I was also of that thought as well. Is not setting my alarm, because I'm like a 4:30 family where, and light sleepers throughout the night. So just not, even if it just means an extra 20 minutes of sleep, I really look forward to that. So, thank you, great job.
Ms. Waite.
Yes, so I guess I just have a question because I, you know, hard decision here. But how many of you actually, this year during a snow day, either built a snowman, made a fort, did, had a snowball fight, or went sledding, or did something fun outside on a snow day? Raise your hands. Well, that's pretty good. I think, I think you, I mean, personal experiences, you know, you're showing you're really putting that time to good use. And that's exactly what you should be doing. So, we'll keep those traditional snow days, in my opinion.
So I just want to say that was really great. And I want you to all keep, keep it up. Because I'm going to tell you a story about my child, who in elementary school got instruction in writing a persuasive essay, and they had to write a letter to their principal. And he was in 4th grade, and he decided it was not fair that all of the 5th graders had all the fun, all the end-of-the-year events, everything. And so he argued that the 4th grader should have a talent show. And now DeMello has a talent show every year for the 4th graders because of the persuasive writing of one of the students here, there. So, your writing matters, your opinion matters, and I'm super impressed with what you have done. I will also finish up by saying that I am also, by training, a political science professor. So I'm going to teach you two things about government tonight. One, a school committee cannot make a decision about an issue unless it's on the agenda. So while we all very much appreciate your arguments, we will not be taking a vote tonight. And two, right? That really isn't our purview. It is, in fact, the purview of the superintendent. Luckily, she happens to be sitting here, and she heard all of your persuasive evidence. So, don't be disappointed if we don't take a vote this evening. Do know that your arguments and your opinions were heard by all of us, and we very much appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Awesome job, guys. All right. So next on our agenda, we're going to have our student representative report. And Anne, can you step up to the podium and join us?
Hi, everyone. So with the return from April break, we've had some very exciting and engaging events here at DHS. To start off, our indoor wins took home the Scholastic Wins A-Class Silver Medal for their outstanding performance at the WGI World Championships in Dayton, Ohio this past weekend. Our indoor percussion took home the Bronze Medal at the WGI World Championships Finals this weekend with their stellar performance. Congratulations to the indoor color guard, who had a strong performance prior to April vacation. Congratulations and best of luck to all our students and advisor, Mrs. Kane, who are currently in Atlanta for the DECA International Competitions. The DHS Theater Company is celebrating its 10th year in existence with a production of Shrek the Musical on May 5th and May 6th at 7:00 p.m. and May 7th at 1:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. Tickets are going fast, so we encourage all members of the community to come out and support our theater company and get tickets while you can. Tickets are $15 for adults and $12 for students and senior citizens. Best of luck to all our AP students, who will begin AP exams next week. Our teachers and students have worked so hard all year and are very prepared for your success. Thank you to all the custodians who worked hard over April vacation to transform the dining hall back to normal. There was a definite buzz in the cafeteria as students sat at lunch tables instead of individual desks for the first time since March of 2020. Thank you.
Senator, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Noons.
So how did you feel to sit at the lunch tables today?
It was awesome. This is not really something I've been expecting. So I was really glad to see this kind of step towards normalcy, and kids loved it. So this is really something we've all been wanting, and truly, we were all so excited.
Good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. So, returning back to the order that we have on the agenda here, we've set aside 10 minutes for public comment on any of the items that are on agenda this evening. I know we have a number of people in the audience who might like to say some things. I will ask everyone to please state your name when you come up to the podium. I will also ask you to keep your comments brief. We already did have a public comment session several weeks ago about the logo, so we don't intend to spend another couple of hours here rehashing arguments. So having been said, please, anyone who wants to make a comment on any of our agenda items is welcome to step up to the podium and, and state their opinion.
Hello, everyone. My name is George Markot. I am the Chair of Defend Dartmouth, and I want to actually thank everyone for this issue. I don't think I've ever seen the town so gelled and united over one issue. 81% to 19% was what the final referendum question was. And so we really like you guys to consider what the voters of Dartmouth have said. I think we are very well united on this issue. I don't really think there's much to discuss further. Like you said, Ms. Jenkins, I don't think there is a lot. We just hope that, you know, moving forward, we can move past this. We can unite the school board along with the town. Thank you, Mr. Noons and Mr. Oliver. We know that you're a yes vote. Ms. Ammaral, it's 81% to 19%. I just don't know how much more we can give you, other than the Wampanoag's want this, the town wants this. Ms. Waite, I know that you're a no, along with Ms. Jenkins. I can tell you that Lynn Turner, in the election, was only a few hundred points, a few hundred votes behind these two. You know, if you want to give her an issue to run on next year, I think that by going against the will of the people, that would be certainly an issue that I'm sure she would embrace. And lastly, Ms. Jenkins, I know probably in your circle that you run with, you probably wouldn't get much pushback. They probably want you to just keep your vote the same. But you mentioned yourself, you're a political science professor. I am a student of political science of UMass Dartmouth, but it was SMU at the time. And I think democracy has spoken. If I got 19% of the vote, and I ran against you, and you got 81%, and I said, "I'm smarter, I know better, I know schoolkids better, I should be the one", it would be hard for you to say, "Yeah, let's just give it to George. He's got 19% of the vote." Yeah, you know, maybe the voters were just wrong. The voters aren't wrong. So, please, you know, we have an opportunity for you, Ms. Jenkins and Ms. Waite, to, to come around to the yes side. Thank you.
My name is David Aronson. I have lived at Dartmouth since 1990. My kids attended Dartmouth schools, and I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words to you. First, the referendum is not the only thing you must consider. But the group that sponsored the non-binding mascot referendum is now demanding that you regard it as a binding referendum. Placing the issue on a town ballot reflects their contempt for you and a majority of the Native Americans we've never heard from on the issue of the mascot. It turns out that the six organizers of this group were all members of the Dartmouth Republican Town Committee. From their eight-day financial filing with the town clerk, the group's top donors were the wife of one of the members, and a Republican Florida real estate tycoon running for Florida Senate. The fact is, this issue has always been about Republican culture wars. And you committee members do not have to enlist in that war. As the only body actually responsible for the schools, the committee, and by that I mean the school committee, not the town Republican Committee, you should be the ones making the final decision on the mascot. It's an issue of human dignity, of how we show respect and care for children of color in our schools, as well as a matter of how we want to project our image at away games. Finally, there are tribes offended by mascots throughout the region that have never been consulted. Native Americans with the strongest connections to Dartmouth can't vote here. And those who can vote here are formal members of a tribe 25 miles away on Martha's Vineyard. These may both be realities of the Native American diaspora, but that is precisely why you need to listen to many more indigenous voices on this issue. The other reality is that the referendum was specifically engineered to dismiss Native American concerns by permitting a town of overwhelmingly white voters to decide a moral issue as if we were deciding upon a homecoming queen. That was a shameful call by a town selectman, who was thankfully voted out of office. The referendum should never have been placed on the ballot. Thank goodness it was non-binding. And thank goodness that the committee still has discretion to make the final call. Don't hand over that discretion and your mandate to the town Republican Committee tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Mattos. I have three daughters in the school system, including one here at the high school. To the best of my knowledge, no local tribes petitioned the school committee to have the high school's logo removed, stating after almost five decades that they were suddenly offended by the use of the image or the word "Indian". Instead, it was my understanding that this effort to remove the Indian logo and to change Dartmouth High's identity came internally from members of the school committee and their personally-selected subcommittee. That did not sound right to me when I heard that. So I volunteered to help the Defend Dartmouth Ballot Question Committee, not because of my political party affiliation, as some have tried to portray. And the Dartmouth, Defend Dartmouth Ballot Question Committee is not some militia group, as others have tried to insinuate. The Ballot Question Committee was formed to help make other parents and voters aware of this effort to remove the Dartmouth High school logo and seek community support to defend the logo via the April 5th non-binding referendum vote. This is not a political issue. This is a community issue. Not red or white, it's green. And on April 5th, the voters of all political parties united and told the school committee where they stand. I was encouraged to hear that everyone seems to agree that we should utilize this opportunity to strengthen Native American education for students. But now the question is, will the school committee stand with the voters? I truly hope they will. But if not, I assume that there will be recall efforts, and Dartmouth voters will have opportunities in upcoming election cycles. I'm sure there will be other candidates that will step forward as a result of this issue to offer their service to the town and run for school committee. Voters will then have the opportunity to vote for candidates that respect their opinions instead of those who think they know better than them. Thank you.
Hello, I am Lynn Turner. I recently ran for school board. On my campaign trail, the hot topic, one of the biggest hot topics, was what do I feel about the logo? And that was asked of me, as well as my fellow candidates running for school board, Chris Oliver and John Noons. And we all three said that we would support the logo. And the name and the logo. John and I signed a pledge, and Chris Oliver wrote a letter that was read in place of debating at the Candidate Debate Forum, that he would keep vote to keep the logo. That was while we were running. Then came the vote. The record numbers that showed up for the election. And there was an 81% vote by the town to keep it. I urge you all to vote yes, to keep the logo, in lieu of how much the town is in support of it. And I think that it would be best to put our energies into creating a curriculum that's rich and celebratory of our local history. And if we do this, we can honor our Native American roots here and work together, left, right, center, and make great things happen for Dartmouth. Thank you.
I'm Gretchen Baker Smith. I'm going to simply remind the school committee respectfully that your charge is to ensure the safety and dignity and vitality of children and youth. And it's not about what the adults think. It's about what the research shows, which is that mascots with a native connection have a negative impact on youth who are indigenous and also confirm stereotypes of non-indigenous youth. You can't refute that. I really feel deep frustration that it is at this point. And I want to just appeal to your moral fiber to do the right thing on behalf of the youth. And that it doesn't really matter. and that it doesn't really matter what other people say, you can't vote on racism. But if enough children and teens say, "This is harmful to me," we need to listen to that, and that is your charge. Thank you.
Respected school committee member, my name is Shirlin Zhang, Dartmouth's town resident. I'm here tonight just to show that I have done studies regarding this argument just brought up, that the gerundity psychological harm produced by the use of Native American mascot. The supportive articles by Davis, Dina, and others in 2020 is a comprehensive review of empirical research findings. The primary work is done by Freiberg, ATL, and 2008, titled "Of Warrior Chiefs and Indian Princesses: The Psychological Consequence of American Indian Mascot." The first study in this work is conducted with forty-eight American Indian high school students divided in three groups. First group is being shown a image of Chief Wu-Ha. The second group is shown with the image of Princess Pocahontas, and the third group is shown with a text description of stereotype negative outcomes. And then, students were asked to write down the first five words that comes to their mind. These words then been classified as positive and negative, but the result is, the American Indian mascot representation has more positive association than the negative representation presented in the stereotype negative outcome conditions. Even the author has to admit, this result suggests that American Indian mascot representation are not always regarded as negative. But they did not stop there. In the second study, they added a control group where students were not showing any of these three primers, and the word association activity is replaced by a self-esteem measure questionnaire. Then, it is found, all three representations significantly depressed stated self-esteem score. But the surprising result is, Chief Wu-Ha and Pocahontas depressed self-esteem even more than the stereotypically negative outcomes. Why? The study cannot address how this undermined effect occurs, but the author of the comprehensive review articles quickly jumped into the conclusion. Native mascots, regardless of the type, and regardless of whether they are perceived positive or negative, they are all harmful to the psychological well-being of the native youth. This conclusion is far too broad or generalized, and we must question its validity and reliability gave numerous limitations in this experimental setting, including very small sample size, very small number of variable values, and oversimplifying the long-term psychological well-being with just one-time, one-shot questionnaire score. The most fatal flaw in this study is the failure to recognize uniqueness of each artwork and the societal context where the image is being used, how this logo is being created, and what kind of meaning for the people who use it has associated with it. This is our Dartmouth Indian logo. And there is no study support this logo has any psychological harmful effect on native youth. Please support use of this logo. Thank you.
Chris Pereira, town meeting member and former school committee member. Thank you for allowing the opportunity to have a final discussion on this topic. Some quick facts for everybody to kind of remind themselves about. Number one, you know, we've been at this kind of issue now for going into a fourth calendar year. It's time for folks to have some finality on this issue. The town deserves that. The people spoke extremely loud, direct, and clear on April 5th in a very high turnout election. And another reminder that every Dartmouth Wampanoag, every Dartmouth Wampanoag is for this logo and wrote you all a letter. No tribe, despite rhetoric from some people, no tribe has come out against the logo. Have they gone on record against mascots? That's correct. But we don't have a mascot, we have a logo. I urge you, I urge you tonight to uphold the will of the voters and vote to reaffirm this logo. The people of this town have spoken, and they deserve finality. No more delays, no more discussion, no more excuses, and no politics. Thank you very much.
Renee Viera, Dartmouth Educators Association, town resident and parent of schoolchildren. I originally was coming this evening to speak to you about something else that we will discuss in a moment. But because I'm an educator in town, and I just want some records to be clear for folks that are listening, I was, I did vote in this past election, and to my son's dismay, I chose to not vote for or against the Indian logo. We here in this high school and in this district, we are all about trying to make all children feel inclusive. It is not my decision, and I am grateful it is not my decision, it is yours, it is a burden that I think is unfairly put on you folks. But it's also a decision that is probably...
I will ask the audience to remain quiet while our speakers are sharing their thoughts. Show courtesy for all of our speakers, please.
It is unfair that you're in this particular situation. I would just like to recognize that what we say to our students is that we bleed green, we have pride in Dartmouth Public Schools. Whether that needs to be a logo or a mascot, I am unsure. It's not my decision to make, it is yours. But I would just like to say that, I'm sorry, it is political, and it is political when folks are threatened to be voted out of a particular position. I want you to be here for the students in this town. I want you to be here for my children, okay? That's what we need. We need children to recognize that they are he, she, them, they are just unified, and we need to accept them, okay? So I just want that on record. And last thing I'd like to say is that, yes, it was the greatest turnout that we've had in a number of years. Still, less than twenty percent of Dartmouth spoke. So you can say eighty percent sounds great, eighty percent of less than twenty percent spoke, all right? That doesn't change your decision, I'm not asking you. I just want folks that are listening out there to just understand that we can sway our numbers, and I don't envy the position and the decision you need to make. That being said, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Renee Viera, and this is my wonderful colleague Jody Parisi. And we are here this evening standing in front of you because we know that you have the lucky task this evening of selecting the subcommittee groups. So, you know, you've got names in a hat or the short straw you have to draw. We are the queens of negotiations, and though we've enjoyed Mr. Noons holding on to that particular sub-chair, what's the word I'm looking for? Designation or assignment? Thank you. We would welcome anyone else that might be interested in just sitting in on negotiations with us for our DEA contracts. And I just wanted to point out that there are some districts who actually will hold some meetings in the evening, recognizing that folks do have daytime commitments. So if that's something that anyone else would like to be interested in, whether you end up being the sub-chair or not, you know that you are more than welcome to join, that is your right. We do welcome any and all, and we'd be very willing to change meeting dates if there was a meeting or two that you would like to sit in on. And we're beginning negotiations. Dr. Gifford and I and Jody, we're hoping that they're positive, smooth sailing, and quick, because there are a lot of really important things to do, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've had over ten minutes now for public comment, so I think we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes for April 4th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Mr. Oliver. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That motion carries unanimously. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes for April 11th, 2022.
So moved, Madam Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Ms. Waite. Is there any further discussion on the issue? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is organization of the committee. The first item is the election of officers, so I will open the floor for nomination of the office of chair.
Turn it over to Bonnie.
According to policy, the nominations for office of the chair is made from the floor. So the floor is open, and anyone on the committee may make a nomination for chair. Ms. Amaro.
I would like to nominate my fellow colleague, John Noons, to chair.
I'll second that.
All right. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, the nominations are now closed. Given that there is only one nomination on the floor, that means Mr. Noons is now the chair of the Dartmouth School Committee, unless anyone else would like to vote up. All right, so Mr. Noons, you want to switch spots?
Sure.
All right.
Give me a second here. Three hours of...
I'm going to take your name.
Yes, yes, yes. You know, you're trying to get rid of me that quick?
I like your job.
But...
He said you had the sniffles.
Oh, yeah.
Do you like a cake?
Yeah. All right. Huh? Vice Chair.
It's a organization.
I'm sure. The secretary is... So we just have to, you know... All right, give me a second here to get everything figured out. All right, so the next item is the appointment of a vice chair.
I'll nominate Kathleen Amaro to be vice chair.
I was going to nominate you to stay another term, quite honestly.
You can decline the nomination, Kathleen.
Yeah, I decline.
Okay.
Yeah. For this chair, yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Noons, I would like to nominate Ms. Waite for vice chair.
I want a second. Do I have a second now? No.
Mary Waite?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Amaro. Any other discussion? Chair here or none, since we have none, we will close nominations. And as Dr. Jenkins said about me, it's obvious that you get to be vice chair. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like another year in this position.
What practice.
What practice, there you go. So now you and I get to, you know, rewrite graduation speeches. Just think about that, okay?
I promise it won't be as long this time.
Please, okay? Anything over thirty seconds is too long. Personal opinion. All right, next on the...
Mr. Noons?
Yes, ma'am.
May I just make a comment? I just wanted to thank Dr. Jenkins for her service, having had served 2020 and then my colleague Chris the year after. I know you had the difficult task, and you served with grace and leadership, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. All right, next on the agenda, next item, next is a secretary to the school committee, and that usually falls to our illustrious superintendent.
Chair, I'll nominate Dr. Gifford to serve as our secretary for the school committee.
All right, so we have a motion by Dr. Jenkins.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Waite to appoint Dr. Bonnie Gifford as secretary to the school committee at the illustrious same rate of pay. So we appreciate that, thank you, ma'am. On that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Comments of the chairperson comments, and I really have none. It's a privilege and an honor to be sitting here. Over my thirty-one years and such, I've lost how many times I've sat here, but I always take this position with the utmost responsibility. And just on a personal note, a thank you to the citizens of this great town and voters who, you know, found it in their hearts to put me back in this position. It's appreciated, but it's not something that I take for granted, believe me. So I thank you for all of that. All right, next item on the agenda, school committee assignments. We all got, in our packets, we all got the assignments that we have got at the moment. We'll just kind of go down what they are there and such. Dartmouth Educational Foundation, Ms. Waite?
Yes.
You want to stay with that?
I can stay with that. I'm taking a break through the end of the year, but I will be rejoining that in the fall.
Okay, that's fine. Southeastern Maths Educational Collaborative, Mr. Oliver?
I am happy to stay on that and continue my service there.
Thank you. I think Ms. Cooper would be happy, too.
I agree. I enjoy serving that board.
Yeah, that's it. I'll stay with the Mass Association of School Committees unless someone else wants that. I'm good with that.
That's okay, thanks.
Thank you. Negotiation representatives, I'm in that position, Kathleen backs me up. You heard what Ms. Viera and Ms. Parisi said. I've said before, it's not a popularity, I'm more than willing to do it. Yeah, yeah. I'm getting a...
I wouldn't mind learning more and, you know, and sitting in, and, you know, even if it's like, you know, alternating with Ms. Amaro. I know certainly it's, you know, a lot of work, but I just, you know, just to go through that process, I think is instructive, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So we'll make you the backup to that? How's that?
Well, I don't want to, like, you know, bump you.
Does that work for you, Kathleen?
That works fine, yeah.
Okay. All right, Policy Committee, is Kathleen and Mary still good?
Yes, thank you.
Technology, Mr. Oliver?
I'd be happy to stay on. I don't think we actually had any technology meetings in recent memory. But yes, I'd be happy to stay on.
Yeah. Okay, Field and Facilities Committee, I know we haven't, we haven't met again with everything going on type of deal, but I can stay with that, Kathleen.
Yeah, I'm happy to as well.
All right. Budget Committee, that works with Mr. Kylie, is Ms. Amaro and Dr. Jenkins, and I'm the backup. Is that still good for everybody?
Works for me.
Okay.
I would be happy to take that role on if anyone wants a break, but...
You want to?
I mean, I feel like I don't, I'm getting the easy way out, this is like one of my only committee assignments, so I don't...
That's fine, that's fine.
I mean, I could do something, I'd be happy to share it with you, but then I have, like, nothing, and I feel like I'm not doing my work, so... Ms. Amaro, you want to?
Yeah, you can, would you like to...
Okay. It's up to you.
I would happily...
I have plenty.
Yeah, you have a lot.
You've got a lot on your plate, yeah.
Right.
Excuse me. Okay, that's fine. Committee representatives on the town charter committee, Ms. Waite and Ms. Brooks.
Do we need to find out if Ms. Brooks can continue to serve as our rep?
I'll find out from her, I'll reach out. We haven't actually met, because I think we've gone through the entire charter, and now we're meeting with an outside, you know, group and kind of seeing our next steps. So she's homing that group, so we'll, I'll ask her.
Yeah, she's kind of chairing that, so...
Yeah, I would say there's a good argument to be made for continuity there and membership, because there's so much work that's been done on that committee. Just someone jumping in now would be too late. So I would rather keep her.
Yeah, I would, I would, too.
Legally, if she can stay, I'm fine with that.
And she's homing it, so I think that's, you know, having the knowledge of having gone through the entire document, there's a lot that's involved, so...
Correct me if I'm wrong, she's chairing that?
No, she is chairing that, no, absolutely. She's been fantastic in that.
I knew she'd be a good fit.
Now, she keeps us a very diverse group, so we've had some shifts over from other committees, and it's been a little challenging in that, so it's nice to see, keep this continuity, for sure.
Yeah, that's fine, okay. And then Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Dr. Jenkins and Ms. Amaro.
So I'd like to propose we just sort of leave that one for now, because it's not, we haven't made any decisions on the committee, and pick the issue of, pick that issue of who's assigned to that committee back up when we have that full discussion of the DEI Committee. Just full disclosure, so everyone knows, that was originally on the agenda, but when I looked at our agenda, our agenda for this evening was quite extensive.
Yeah.
So I just asked that we delay it till, I think, the twenty-third meeting. So I would just say we can, I mean, even if we leave that blank for now, and we can pick that back up when we have that discussion.
Yep, that's fine, I'm good with that. And the one thing that I did, I skipped over, and I was, I did that purposely, too, was the school assignments between the high school middle, DeMello, Quinn, Porter, Cushman. We made a decision a couple of committee meetings ago, and we've kept up with the type of deal that not to have any one particular person assigned to one particular school, and we just all kind of bounce in and out and see principals and such. Are we good with that? Does anybody, we're good with that? Okay. Okay.
Has anyone heard, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, heard from the schools how they feel about that in terms of?
No, I haven't.
I haven't done much bouncing around in the sense of COVID.
I haven't either with COVID.
Well, no, I haven't, no, nor did I, believe me, you know, so we'd see the principals outside walking by.
That's exactly what I do too, yeah.
But that's, you know, but I think, and I think they all understand where they, if they have an issue, where they can find us.
Yep, and we always just ask that if you're going to go by, just let them know, give your heads high.
Yeah, oh yeah, always done that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Wait brought up the Open Space Committee, that if you recall, we had a conversation about this previously, last year, I guess. We were wondering if this is the Open Space Committee, which asks for our school committee rep as well?
Yeah.
So it's not our subcommittee, as the other one is not.
But as a town charter committee, it would be the same.
So do we want to continue to add them?
We should add it, you know, probably have it there.
Because I've been.
No, I mean, yeah, yeah, no, I'm happy to join, I mean, it's just not on the list, that's all.
Yeah. Did we, did we vote someone in that for that?
We're both in that.
Okay, well, we'll add it then, because it won't.
And they're having some nights coming up, or they're bringing in the community.
Just more communities.
More night meetings, yeah, there's.
Yeah, why not?
Why not, there's, yeah, because there's a meeting, actually, there's a meeting tomorrow night at the.
There is one?
Yeah, the Dartmouth Library. There's three, and then there's one in May, the Town Hall, and the June one, they haven't.
And then there's the survey too, so.
The survey is online.
We'll add that to the, to the list, helpful, for the next time.
Okay, so we are good with that?
Yep.
All right, here we go. All right. Anything else with organization of the committee?
No.
No, we're good, all right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Discussion on the Dartmouth Indian logo. So we have been at this for the better part of three or four years, give or take, and number of other times before that in my tenure here. I know personally, because I've got them, believe it or not, all in a nice file in my computer, I was able to figure out how to set them up into a folder, and I've got probably close to 1,500 emails the past, between with the election coming up and now after the election, this meeting tonight, so I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for discussion. Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Noons, and thank you to everyone that spoke here this evening. As Mr. Noons has said, this has been a long road for all of us and on the committee, as well as those of us, the townspeople. You know, I came at this from an independent standpoint, I'm not left, I'm not right, I'm an independent voter, and I don't see this from my perspective as, you know, left or right issue. I see this as, from my point of view, looking at the entire town, what's been presented to us on both sides of the issue, there's passion on both sides of the issue, there's no doubt about that, but at the end of the day, I think we have a great opportunity in this town to do something special, and I think it could potentially be a model at some point, at least for the state, at the state level. You know, I, because one of the things I don't want to do though, I don't want to reaffirm the Indian icon and then just be done with it. The voters have clearly spoken, but the one common thing between the voters, in between the public forum, between the tribes, we all agree on it, it was said this evening, is that there has to be more done with the curriculum piece. There has to be more done with the schools, and the larger picture, with the town, the town in general. So without doing that, I, you know, it just, we're no better than any other city or town that just says, you know what, we're just going to keep this just because that's just the way it is, we've got to do more. I've heard it from multiple people. So for me, you know, I'm just going to, I'm starting, I'm going to open it up, and certainly have discussion. I'd like to make a motion that the Dartmouth Public Schools continue to use and honor the iconic Dartmouth Indian, as drawn by Clyde Andrews, a Dartmouth High School alumni and member of the Aquinawampanoag tribe, in addition to tasking the school administration with engaging the tribe, creating a formal partnership with them.
Please. So we have a motion by Mr. Oliver. Do we have a second? The chair will second. Discussion. Dr. Jenkins.
So Mr. Markcott is right, I am a political scientist, I think about the Constitution, I think about it a lot, I teach it multiple times a year. You know, our founders established a constitution that does outline a provision for democracy, but the leading political theorists at the time, Edmund Burke, Alexis de Tocqueville, were deeply concerned about the problem with the tyranny of the majority, right? And then the Federalist Madison wrote about tyranny of the majority, and the anti-Federalists working with the Federalists outlined the Bill of Rights because they believe, right, there are certain things that should not be subject to the will of the majority. And history has shown us repeatedly that approval by the majority does not mean that something is right. In World War II, large majorities of Americans favored the internment of the Japanese, Japanese-American citizens, it's not right, we know that now. State majorities in Massachusetts opposed gay marriage in 2004, when the Supreme Court legalized gay marriage. I hope most of us know that that was right, the right thing to do, the state Supreme Court. Local majorities in the South favored segregation, right? So just because something is popular or supported does not make it right. So the question for me is, is there evidence that this is morally harmful? And I think the answer is yes, we have indirect and direct evidence of the harm created by logos and mascots.
All right. I'm going to say this once, and I'm only going to say it once, okay? If there is another outburst, I am going to recess this meeting, and I will ask everyone to leave. Okay? Am I clear? Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, I apologize.
That's okay. There are studies that have shown that there are indirect, this indirect evidence that there are harmful effects of native mascots and logos, that is part of those studies, right, leading to stereotyping, prejudiced attitude. But we also have direct evidence in this community. We have direct evidence from students in the high school who do not wish to wear that logo, because they feel that it perpetuates harm in this community when they travel out of this community. And while there are tribal members who live in Dartmouth, who support the logo, we also have testimony from our indigenous neighbors, including some members of the Aquinawampanoag, the Mashpee-Wampanoag, and the Pocasset-Wampanoag, who feel the mascot is harmful. There is division in the indigenous community about that. And so for me, the fact that some members, a good number of members of our indigenous neighbors find this mascot harmful, it is, that makes it deeply problematic to me. Right, I agree 100% with my colleagues about the need for education, I support that, but I cannot agree with any motion to maintain the logo after hearing the evidence from our indigenous neighbors and our students.
Ms. Amorall.
So I, somebody in the community shared a podcast with me earlier today, and I'm so grateful that she did. You know, in the podcast, it begins with talking about our town seal, which I did not know in Latin, reads "service through kindness and peaceful means." And so my perspective and what I'm sharing and my thoughts, I haven't spoken much publicly about this, you know, I'm at home, my husband's like, why don't you just come out and say what you're. No, that's my deliberation, my personal, I take this, like John, this role very seriously. And so here we are. So my take, I want to honor that message of service through kindness and peaceful means, because here we are as a community, seemingly swimming upstream from this us versus them mentality. All the signs around town defend Dartmouth, you know, what are we defending? I've been asked often. You know, I want to be thoughtful, and I want to be considerate, and I wanted to decipher between what I believe to be the right thing to do and what I believe to be the most beneficial for this community. And I believe that there's always room for common ground, at least for a beginning point. You know, after two years of COVID, school closures, loss, incredible mental health challenges, I believe my role, this difficult decision that we're here making, all the time that we've taken discussing this, my role, I believe, is to look for as much common ground as possible, and so that we can begin to move forward towards some semblance of healing as a community. So what would I like to see happen? I don't completely disagree with your motion, Mr. Oliver, but the only way that I would not vote to remove the logo or move forward is, you know, what would I like to see happen? I would like us, as Mr. Oliver noted, you know, to add a robust history, to include the real experience of native people in our area as a starting point, because I think education is where this needs to begin, this needs to begin with a deep education around what we're dealing with. It's not about, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, anyway. I would like us as a community to inventory where we currently use the symbol, you know, and set some parameters around its use in a comprehensive way, more than just no bags on the gym floor, that's not enough. For example, this was brought to my attention by someone, someone in the community, we can't have Indian heads on golf balls and hitting them across a green, okay? We can't have that, that's, that's not right, that's a non-negotiable. I'd like to allow us to allow, I'd like to see us allow for student choice as to whether they want to have the logo on their uniform or warm-up gear. You know, if they select to wear the logo, fine, in this interim during, you know, in this next phase, if not, fine, maybe it's a patch, an iron-on, maybe we have uniforms, some with, some without. I would like us to consider no logo for away games, no logo on away uniforms. I would love for us to add Native land attribution at the beginning of each meeting to complement the education that we will hopefully, I would, I would like to see happen within our school system, more than just a third grade trip to Plymouth Plantation, that's not enough, we need to do better, we can do better. And I did plan to speak with, to somebody about that, my family got COVID, here we are, never circled back. And I would like to convene a town-wide subcommittee, similar to the Healthy Dartmouth Committee that we had, where we had people from town government, we had community members, we had, you know, and we did some great work on that Health, the second iteration of the Healthy Dartmouth that I was on, where we, we were up against opioid pandemic, and we did a lot of work in regards to that, and it was something I was quite proud of. And so I would like any future kind of conversations around how we could potentially, what I would hope during this education phase, is to have representation from, from native people, town government, local boards, community members, students. And so that's where I stand on this right now, and I think it means, I don't disagree with your motion, Mr. Oliver, but I, I would like some, some more detail in firming up what that education and what that looks like. Because just to say education, slap it, vote, agree, disagree, passes, fails, I think we need to be more mindful and meaningful with this. That's where I stand.
Thank you. Ms. Wait.
Yes, so I think for all of us, this has been quite a difficult and thoughtful journey, I like to think. I think that in bringing this topic before the committee and in all the discussions that we had as a community, I think we learned a lot, I think the journey was valuable, so that we could hear and be considerate about, you know, what are the issues as we continue, you know, if we're going to keep the icon and the name, what does it mean? And to go through the process, I think is, you know, it's clear that as a community, we've decided that, again, to echo my colleagues, we want more education, we want more presence, and we want this to be, you know, a rich piece of our collective identity if we're going to move forward. You know, I, you know, I did, I do struggle with the concept of, you know, if we're, as a town, this is, you know, there's a lot of discussion, this is, you know, mascots are dangerous, and then, you know, we have another piece that says, well, it's not a mascot. I think that's a difficult distinction if we don't have another placeholder, because right now, I think for the, the middle school student, the elementary student, it's difficult for them to discern that it's not a mascot, so I think that's, you know, I think we need to be careful around the language and the education. But I also do think, and again, this has been a process, and I've taught to folks, I've been, you know, all across the, from the town, I've, I've talked to various members of the indigenous tribes, and so I think that we do have, and I agree with my colleague, we do have an opportunity to be, to make something better, you know, and with that, you know, I, I know that, you know, I'm talking to representatives from the Select Board, that there is a very big interest in working with the town to kind of create this new identity, and to, you know, really think about, you know, how are we going to, if we, again, in part of keeping the logo, if we do that, or the, I'd like to say icon and name, if we go in that direction, and again, I, I agree with my colleague that it has to be tied specifically to requirements, but I would like to see the town as part of a standing committee, representatives, where as we're coming in the town, we would see signs that would say, if we have the icon, Dartmouth honors. And I think that concept of Dartmouth honors should always, if, if, if the logo travels, it should be on the back of the band bus, that Dartmouth honors. And so, again, like, taking it forward, I would like to see those land agreements being formalized, I would like to see the town and the school websites have, you know, on the school website and on the town website, those relationships delineated, again, possibly under that tagline, Dartmouth honors. You know, in thinking through, I do believe that we do have a robust education that we're starting on. I know that I've worked with Dr. Gifford a little bit, going through the pre-K to fifth grade curriculum, the social studies curriculum that the teachers are starting to work with now, has been updated, and they're looking at it, and I think there are a lot of opportunities, not to create a whole separate curriculum, but to work within that curriculum, there are natural segues to really do valuable education without, we're not having to ream at the wheel because it's already right there. For example, and I've worked extensively within the elementary schools, in the fourth grade, they're working around, they do a whole project on different parts of the country, they can easily, as part of that, include like work around the Native Americans, and then bringing that education out to the community, I would love to see those kids like having like a showcase night, and that could be, you know, maybe even all the schools, and I know that that's supported by Mr. McGinnis Town at the Town as well. So I, I think there are a lot of opportunities, and again, I do have to say, we are doing, I just want to acknowledge that we have some great teachers who are already doing a lot of this work, certainly within the ninth grade, that ELA programming has, has been working with, with Sherman Alexie's like works, and I think, again, there's just natural extensions. And, and again, it's just showcasing that and connecting that to the community, but it is, we were given the responsibility, this is, you know, this is a school issue, but it is, I do understand, it's a, in order to make this go forward, we have to work together as a town, and so, and I think that we have opportunity with new people on the Select Board, with a new, and also bringing into the college, a new chancellor, and I think, you know, with our dedication, we can make this something meaningful, you know, we can go to Russell Mills Garrison and see a kiosk and see those connections between, you know, what we're doing here in town, in the, in the schools, our history, and connecting back to what teachers are doing. So I, I'd like to see this be, again, because I'm, this is a very difficult decision, but if we're going to keep it, we have to have it have meaning, we have to go back and say, okay, we're doing this, we're, we are, we are keeping the Indians, we're keeping the icon, but it means something, and we can show people that it means something, we're gathering money for the, through the Dartmouth Honors Fund, where we're donating to colleges or providing resources for our teachers, so we have to do this in a real way. So I'm, I'm, again, I would tie it to, again, the formation of a standing committee with equal representation between our indigenous peoples, as well as the schools and the towns, to kind of go through what are the standards for like conduct and all of that, and we can talk about that later, as well as the real robust education, and, you know, asserting that there would be future relationships. So that's kind of a little over the place, but that's where I'm landing.
That was great.
I need to, I would like to just clarify one thing. I mentioned something about the fact that I got 1,500 emails on. Now, I did, also, I did get some for and some, you know, some against, so just, you know, I did not, I hope, delete anybody's type of deal. I mean, I do have them all in that folder, I get that. Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I agree with, with everything that, you know, my colleague, Mrs. Wait and Mrs. Amorall stated. I certainly respect Dr. Jenkins' perspective. I think that's one of the things that, you know, this committee is good, good at, is, you know, we can say what we want, but at the end of the day, we certainly do respect each other's positions and opinions. The only question that I have, and I can certainly withdraw my motion or modify the motion, but I don't know how much into the weeds we want to get with, with some of the things that were presented, because I'm, I'm in full agreement with both of you. It's just, what's our, I guess, what's the purview of the committee, of the school committee, and what can we do to, you know, can we say the formation of, of a committee? I, I just don't want to get too far in the weeds. That's why the motion was, to some respect, general with, in addition to tasking the school administration with engaging the tribe, creating a formal partnership. So I can certainly withdraw the motion.
No, I, I, I think the motion is, is fine. I agree with you personally. I don't think we want to get, dive into the weeds right now, that type of deal. We are going to have, you know, after the first, the fiscal year, January 1st, some, you know, a couple of new curriculum people that can be tasked with kind of starting to put that together type of deal, not along with everything else that they're, they're going to have type of deal. So I'm, I'm good with that, but no, I don't think we want to get into the weeds. Dr. Jenkins.
I don't, I don't disagree with either of that, but I do also want to amplify, you know, what Ms. Amorall, what Ms. Wait has said. You know, we do have a lot of rules in our handbook about the use of logo, but we are not the only organizations in town that use that logo, and it's been brought to my attention, that they are not bound by the same rules as us. And that there has, in recent years, been some disrespectful behavior in some of those other organizations. And so I don't disagree that we can't sort of, we're the school committee, we control the schools, but at the same point in time, I do think it's important for us to make some sort of statement as a committee, maybe it's a separate resolution, to give to the Select Board, to indicate how important we think it is, and, and maybe that's a separate motion from your motion, I don't know, but that we can all say, that we can then present to the Select Board at our joint meeting, that we, as a committee, believe that the Select Board should do this. So, because otherwise, we're not, we're not fully getting there.
Yeah. I mean, and that, that may be something that could be a good topic for discussion at the Select, the joint meet, joint meeting with them on the 9th of May.
Yeah, and maybe, again, that's, we have a motion on the floor, and that's what we're discussing, but maybe after that, we could do that.
Yeah, I'm good with that, Ms. Wait.
And, and to that end, you know, when we talk about a standing committee, because I do think that's important, because that standing committee, if we have that representation, can address, you know, and has, you know, would have the purview to address, you know, as part of their charge, some of these questions about the use of the icon, looking at the handbook. So would we, how would we go about that? Or is that something, again, to bring before, at that point, to bring before the joint, and so it possibly be a town committee? Or would that be something that we would want to consider, you know, from us? Like, that's kind of my next, I do think that's an important, you know, I've, I've heard that, you know, there's certainly vested interest from some of our local nations to, you know, really see that happen and have that representation, you know, in all of these topics.
No, I, I, I think that is something that probably should come from this committee, to, to, to those groups that are, you know, using, using the logo but not using it the right way, type of deal, and just, you know, kind of get to them and say, here's what this logo is, this is what it means, and a little respect goes a long way, type of deal.
Mr. Chair, I think, much to what Kathleen said, when we had the Healthy Dartmouth Committee, I mean, that came from us, it came, you know, right from the school department itself. But we invited various groups to come in, and people even from New Bedford, because we were, we were battling the opioid thing. We had great conversations, great continued meetings with like Chris Mishu, we formed that Cope group. So I think if we leave it to something like that, and that we start to form and invite people to this kind of a committee, without going through town as a formalized kind of thing, because let's face it, most of it's going to be coming, the work from the school department. So we can't, we can't give it to somebody else to, you know, you guys do it all, but we're going to be in charge, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If there's curriculum to work on, if there's, I love your idea about the kiosk kind of thing, where we can get folks involved, but even the golf ball thing, I was totally unaware of that. So those kinds of things, I think if we just keep it, but yet, put little, you know, statues with, not statues, but like, I'm trying to think, plaques kind of thing, around to, to show how we're honoring, et cetera. But I would certainly take on, you know, for, we've tried to have conversations with various folks already, have, like, we'll, we'll use Healthy Dartmouth as an example. I think we got a lot of work done with that. So I would certainly want to, I would suggest we do something like that, and, and take it from us.
Yeah, to, to, Dr., just to expound on that, because it, it became, you know, light work for each of us, because we self-selected, we had, you know, strategic planning session that, that started us off, you know, out the gate. And, and I can see if you have people coming in passionate about this and having something to offer.
And they'll help.
Yeah. They'll help.
And give ideas.
And they give ideas, and it was fantastic.
Yeah. I can see that. One of the things, I'll just interject also, with the two new directors coming on, we already know that we have to restart the strategic planning process, which we started just before COVID and it got shut down. So that certainly, especially under access inequity, can be part of that as a big, a big goal and a big objective, and then action steps from there. So.
That's great.
Good. You know, it's, I've listened to, and I appreciate everybody. We're all entitled to our opinion, and I appreciate everybody's opinion. It was interesting, and I, that's what I was writing a note on really, so I wouldn't forget, but over the weekend, I was watching C-SPAN 3, and there was a panel discussion going on, and they had a history professor from the West Coast, and it was funny, she was talking about social studies and such, and, you know, professional development for social studies teachers, which I think this is going to have to entail to, to go forward type of deal. And she made the comment about the social studies teachers, the professional development for them is down the bottom, that's one of the first ones that gets cut, type of deal, that she's, and I was thinking of that, and I says, yep, that's a good point for Monday night, that we make sure that there is money there for the professional, for everybody. There always is. And, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate that, but I appreciate everybody's comment. I think everybody knows where I come from, where I stand, so I don't have to get on my soapbox for that. I will, I will just say this, and I've said it before, but it, it is worth repeating, that thems that ignore history are doomed to repeat it, and I don't want to do that. So with that, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Chair hearing then, all in favor of Mr. Oliver's motion.
Did you have a question?
I did. Could you just reread the motion? I mean, I just want to clarify.
Okay. Can you reread that?
Sure, that's fine. I'm good.
I would like to make a motion that the Dartmouth Public Schools continue to use and honor the iconic Dartmouth Indian, as drawn by Clyde Andrews, a Dartmouth High School alumni and member of the Aquinawampanag Tribe, in addition to tasking the school administration with engaging the tribe, creating a formal partnership with them.
Okay. All right. So I'll just add, I'll just add one point of clarification for my other colleagues. Right, the status quo is, we have a, we have an Indian for a logo. So regardless of how this vote goes, we still have an Indian for a logo, just to be clear, right, on, on what happens. The only way that that goes away is if there is an affirmative vote for it to go away. So I just want to be clear, sort of procedurally, I think you would agree, that's how this works, right?
Yep. Mary?
Yes, so, I mean, I, I still think we need to add to that motion that you just had, because I, you know, I do feel that the Standing Committee, to address and question all of those things about its use, you know, where are we using the logo, how are we presenting ourselves on the websites, you know, do we see the, you know, Dartmouth, again, I keep going with the Dartmouth honors, but all of that, I think, needs to be addressed by a Standing Committee. That would be, that's my, like, so.
That, we're not, we're going to get way over where we have to be, my opinion, Chair's opinion, okay? So I would rather, if you want to make a separate motion later, that's fine, but we'll leave Chris's motion just where it is, so we don't lose, we don't lose the forest for the trees, as they say, type of deal, so.
All right, so we have the motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just can't until we see the education more on.
Oppose?
I'm abstaining, so.
All right, so it's three in favor, one oppose, and one abstaining. Okay. All right.
So John, could I do a separate motion now?
Sure.
Okay.
If you want.
Yes, so I'd like to make a, a separate motion to organize, to organize a Standing Committee to address the future use of the Indian name and logo.
Say that again.
I said I would like to make a, a motion for, to form a Standing Committee, or I don't know if it has to be a Standing Committee, would be a Standing Committee, or what would Healthy Dartmouth be, I guess, if we were?
It, it was not an official committee, it just came out of us. We, we made it work, we invited people, we had monthly meetings, so.
So we don't actually need to have a committee?
Right, it wasn't an official committee, and.
Okay, well then I'll withdraw it, I guess, I just want to make sure that that happens. I mean, that was my whole, like, reason I abstained, is that I just want to make sure that the education is a part of this, so.
Yep.
Okay.
And you'll be on.
I think the, I think the education is part of it, because that's part of Mr. Oliver's motion.
Was it? He wasn't so specific, but I think we just need to make sure.
No, he wasn't.
I mean, that's why I just wanted to make sure it was a little bit more specific, that's all.
Doctor, Doctor Jenkins.
Uh.
Excuse me, people, okay?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee recommend to the Select Board, that they also engage in an evaluation of town policies and use of the logo and education in the community, and that we request that they do that.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Good idea, so we have that motion.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I will support it.
Excuse me.
So for Ms. Genthur, it's just that the Dartmouth School Committee requests that the Dartmouth Select Board engage in a process of evaluation of policies of use, imagery, and sort of education in the community beyond the purview of the school committee.
Okay, so we have that, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Oliver. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to ask that perhaps we could deliver that to your point, that since we have a joint meeting coming up, that maybe we could send that to the Select Board.
I have no problem sending that to them.
I don't know if they'll listen to us, but we can send it to them to just, potential agenda item for next week or two weeks.
And we'll have somebody from them on our committee.
Yes.
Would you like me to shut the door, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you. He's so awesome. He's so, I love him. He's like, gosh. Hmm, okay. Nope.
Just pull it.
Ben's in charge. He's awesome. We need, we need a high school teacher to take care of this, she knows exactly what she's doing. I don't know.
No, it's just pull, it's just pull.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay.
All right. Next.
Our handbook, all right.
All right. New business, revision to the handbook. Dr. Gifford.
I'm, I'm hoping you had a chance to look at it, because we, most, obviously, it was just cleanup, a lot of it. We did take the $5 out, the transcript, we made sure of that. So it was a lot of cleanup, and we really would like a vote, because we do need to get it to printers and disseminate, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully you had a chance.
Now, this also, correct me if I'm wrong, this also has the school year calendar in the back for next year.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, okay. All right. Comments on the student handbook? Dr. Jenkins?
I'll make a motion that we approve the student handbook as amended.
I second that.
Good. May I ask a question now after, with that motion?
No. Yes, excuse me, yes, you may.
I guess my question is, you know, you said we have to get this to the printer. Are, are we required to print this?
Yes.
Like, I think we got like a copy of it and never, like, it got shoved somewhere again, and if I ever had a question, I would just Google Dartmouth Public Schools handbook.
Right.
So I'm just curious as to, I mean, there, there is a cost associated with printing a handbook for every student. Do we have to do that?
It's a fair amount.
It is. We've discussed not printing in the past, but.
And, I mean, like, how many people actually read it or use it?
Well, not so much, not, I think not so much that, but I think the reason we have to print it is the fact that there are some families that do not have internet access to computers, so they've got to be able to put their, put their hands on it, be given a copy.
Can we allow people to opt out, right? Like, because I will opt out of all, and you know, the other thing is too, because it's a standardized handbook, if you've got like three kids in, in elementary school, do you need three copies of the DeMello handbook or the Potter handbook? They're all the same.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just cur, I mean.
I know.
There's, right, there's got to, there's got to be a way that we just, you know, it goes home digitally, we have some paper copies available in the front offices that, because here's the thing, let me ask you this.
Yeah, we can look at it, for sure.
Are we sending home paper report cards?
Yeah, we do, for the elementary.
Sometimes for the elementary, just elementary.
Elementary, though?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
That's kind of, yeah.
Right, if we're not sending home, if we're not sending home report cards.
Yeah. Believe me, I'm all for technology.
But elementary, you do.
Yeah.
I know we had the conversation about this before, and for some reason, kept printing. It was a couple of years back, but we can look at it again. We're always willing to save some money and, because we do the electronic sign-offs and all of that, so.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm good. And I would just like to acknowledge, I'd like to thank Ms. Olivera for providing us with the document, with the revisions. That was super helpful, I very much appreciate it, so thankful, thank you to her.
Yeah, it's been a while since we've got that, but way back, that was, that was a helpful thing that, that we got, that we, we used to get, so.
All right.
Or sometimes we'd get it with italicized as to what had changed, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the handbook for school year 22, 23. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, the 2022 summer sport camps, is that, Doc?
That's, Mr. K.
Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Noon. So I apologize for the late delivery of this information, but I provided it to you in hard copy here. So we propose to hold a similar summer sports camp to what we've done in the past, baseball, softball, field hockey, flag football, tennis, basketball, lacrosse, volleyball, soccer, track and field. We had 475 participants last year, which was great, especially considering, you know, we had some concerns at the time regarding COVID and how that would impact our enrollment. So we were very pleased with that. We are proposing that we charge the, the same amount as we did last year, which is $80 for the week. There are two short weeks in this span, so it would, it would begin with a four-day week on, on June 21st, and then obviously the July 4th week as well is also in that, in the midst of the camp. So it would go from June 21st through July 22nd. So we, the camp's been successful, serving students grades two through nine. It is modestly financially successful. We have actually not used it to purchase athletic and PE equipment in the last, well, the camp didn't happen two years ago, but in the last few years, we've, we've sort of just built up the balance in that account a little bit, but our hope would be that we could utilize it to freshen up some, some equipment for our students, so I'd just ask for your consideration on that.
Any questions?[1767.26] Any questions?
Just a quick question, Mr. Kiley. Does this go into a unrestricted revolving account or student activities account? Where does the money go?
Yep, it's a, it's a sub-account of the athletic revolving account, and it, it is all accounted for entirely separately, so all the expenses come out of that, and all of the revenue is deposited into that account.
Oh, great, I'm happy to see that, you know, we're offering again, and the amount, the amount of campers looks like for last year, 475. That's great, thank you.
Doctor Jenkins?
So, Mr. Oliver's question and then Mr. Kiley's response made me think of, we used to sometimes periodically get reports on the revolving accounts, balances, right? I'm not gonna ask you what the balance is on that, but maybe as a future agenda item sometime this summer, when things calm down, maybe we can get a report on those again.
Sure.
That would be great.
Yeah, it actually is also included in my annual town report, information which you receive. But yeah, I'd be happy to provide you an update with where it is.
I did see it, yeah.
Thank you.
Kathleen?
I say this every year, you know what I'm gonna say? You know, the, the weeks kind of coincide or collide with those ESY, you know, the summer school for, for, you know, our vulnerable learners, and so I just hope, as has been past practice, that there is some meaningful kind of coordination and, and scheduling to account for, you know, during that time. You're not gonna please, you can never please everyone, but clearly, but anyway. But just to, you know, make sure that there are some.
Opportunities.
The most, you know, the, the sports that seem to me most popular, perhaps, I don't know if that's a way to gauge it, but don't happen during, during the weeks of ESY, you know? If basketball was during ESY and Liam was still, you know, he would be just upset to have to miss that, because let's face it, and I don't know if, I don't know what, any, any compensatory services that might also be happening in the summertime, I don't know how many students have, you know, I don't know any of that detail, but I'm thinking that there might be more students partaking in extended school year than past years, and so, like past years, I just ask that you keep that into consideration.
No, it's a good, it's a good point, thank you, and we'll make sure that we try and coordinate as best we can. Like you said, we can't, you know, solve everything. We do have some issues with the camp this year in terms of the facilities. We're attempt, gonna attempt to refinish the gym floor here, so that is gonna sort of, we're gonna be a little bit of a juggling act, but we'll figure it out. So we'll try and balance everything as best we can to serve as many, you know, as many students as we can.
Didn't we just redo that gym floor?
Yes, not to that extent, not.
Him and I are just thinking the same.
Right, not, not to the extent of what we did. We replaced the floor.
Correct.
When we redid it. We're not doing that, it's just, it's just the surface.
Okay, all right.
Attempting to.
Like the lines?
It will include lines, as, as you know, Mr. Gaspar is going to, you know, be honored with the new basketball season, and we thought that that was a great time to actually try and fix up the floor a little bit, which if you go out there, is worn.
It is worn, I will say that.
And so, we'd like to incorporate the work that we need to do to honor Mr. Gaspar and his name on the floor and everything with actually fixing up the floor at the same time, so. So it's, it's routine, it's sort of maintenance that needs to occur.
Maintenance sounds better.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's great, you know, wanna see them go forward, you know, anytime we have kids coming together, it's just exactly what we need, so, yeah.
Talking with the superintendent when she was coming in tonight, and, you know, all the activity, you know, the van truck being unloaded and everything, and it's like, it's a school, that's what it's supposed to be, full of kids and activities type of deal, so.
Long overdue.
Yeah, no, it's.
Fantastic.
Being out in Dayton, just not to go, but.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no doubt. All right, next on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, do you need a motion to approve that?
Didn't we have a mo?
You just didn't vote.
I will make a motion to approve the summer sports camp.
Thank you, I apologize, you guys are, DDD, Shannon, who seconded that?
I did.
Mary, okay. Any other discussion? Chair hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, guys. Get used to being here, wow. Okay, next on the agenda is New Befford Regional Vocational Technical High School, school committee member. Doctor Gifford?
Mr. Shay did answer that he was still interested in continuing, so if that's the will of the community, we can vote him right back in.
I have no, I have no, I have no problem with that at all.
So I'll just note, I, I received a letter, Ms. Gunther sent it to me as chair, informing me that Mr. Shay's term was up, and I think that was like after the agenda for the last meeting or after our last meeting or something. So I asked Ms. Gunther prior to this meeting to ask Mr. Shay if he was willing to serve, with the understanding that we could have a discussion, do we wanna open it up or do we wanna just keep Mr. Shay? So just for the background on that, I didn't inform anyone, because that would violate open meeting law. So that's sort of where we are, we have to appoint someone new. Mr. Shay is willing to continue, if that's the pleasure of the committee, or we can open it up for nominations, or applications, I guess it would be.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good with, with him being there.
After the last, I was pleased with the last presentation where he came, and I'd like to see more of those.
Yeah, makes two of us, so, okay.
So I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Shay as the Dartmouth School Committee representative to the vocational, vocational school committee. One second.
Second by, all right, so we have a motion by Doctor Jenkins, a second by Ms. White to reappoint Michael Shay as one of the Dartmouth School Committee representatives to the New Befford Regional Vocational Technical High School. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Shay for his service, I appreciate it.
Yes, and thank you to reappointing him, because I've been on this side, having to sit at town hall to figure out who's going on, so I'll tell you that sometime. Okay, next item of new business, superintendent's update.
Okay, thank you, I have quite a few things tonight, so, as you know, I was not at the last meeting, and so I did listen, and I know two, two topics were brought up, which I wanna kind of provide an update on. One was the ELL department, so I just wanted to give you some statistics on that. The reason, as you know, we did not replace a retired person. Our numbers have gone from 92 down to 54 students, L students, right now. Our schedules, people have enough time in their schedules. One of the things I wanna do for next year, to really get a handle on it, is some of the things that are taking place are, some teachers are not exiting students, along with the DESI guidance that we want exited, they're scoring way over what DESI provides as guidance that they should be scoring. Like, it's a 3.9 to 4.2 on the, on the testing, and we're well above that. We also have done some longitudinal studies on our students, which we call FLAPS, which are formerly English Language Learners, and they're scoring as well, if not better, on MCAS, on NCAS, over the last few years, so there's really good data out there. So I wanted to clarify that the department really is, has enough right now, like, as I said, from 92 down to 54 students. One of the things I wanna address next year is more of, like I said, exiting students when they should be exited, so that we can service kindergarten students, which are not always, it's, again, there's no regulations with DESI, but I think it's important that perhaps kindergarten students get serviced, so we give them that good jump if they come in. We wanna look into a second phase on when we do the home language survey, which simply asks, is there another language spoken in the home? Sometimes people just say yes, and there's no follow-up. Well, it could be perfectly fine that they're bilingual, so then they get coded as L students, which really, there's sometimes no rhyme, no reason, so I wanna do some work with that. Also about more of pushing in servicing students in the classroom, because some of those students that are not being exited are not receiving tier-one instruction enough, they're being pulled out. So there were, there's just some of the things, like I said, I heard the conversation go on, I wanted to kind of address some of that. Also, the speech language department, I've met with them over time, a number of times. You might know, I think we're in a good place now, but over the last, I would say, three or four years, we've had a real hard time getting speech people, not for lack of trying, we post, we get people, or we'll get just SLPA, so unfortunately, we've had late resignations throughout the number of years. We've had some people get ill, so the department's had a, you know, an up and down. We were just able, so some of the times what we did was, thinking we were doing a good service, was hiring an SLPA, because that was all we had to try to help with the servicing of students. So we're meeting again with the SL, with the speech people on Wednesday, and, but right now, we just were able to hire a new one, which I think she's starting tomorrow, as far as I remember, today. So we have right now sevens, if, if, well, we have one that's on medical, but if she returns, we have seven speech, we do have three SLPAs, and we contract with two people. And we're, so our hours of time that are required, we're, we're meeting, I know that the supervision that the speech people have to do is, is burdensome and a lot, so we'll be working with them a little bit more on some of the scenarios that they've presented for next year. So I just kinda wanted to touch base on those, 'cause I knew those two topics were brought up. Also, as you know, if you recall, we do, we do have the DESI audit coming up, and Ms. Olivera and I spent a lot of last week on our vacation dealing with them, because it was a real disappointment, I have to say. They were supposed to get back to us and touch base with us on organizing this audit visit, which is a three-day visit, and plus uploading tons of our documents into their system, which poor Tracy never got access to, we worked back and forth with emails on that. Finally, I gave them the little, you know, snarly email two weeks ago, like, we haven't heard from you guys, it's vacation next week, and you expect to be here May 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and. So we did Zoom with them during the week, and we've put together a schedule. As I said, they'll be here May 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and basically, they're auditing us on leadership and governance, HR, PD, assessment, curriculum instruction, student support, financial and asset management. Ms. White and Mr. Noon are gonna be the school committee reps that meet with them. We've got, Mr. McGinnis is meeting with them, we've got a group, about seven, community and parent people that meet with them, focus groups, so they're doing some virtual and some onsite. So we think we have it under control, the high, all the schools are working with us on, on providing time, the students from middle and high school, so it's a big, pretty big deal, but as of today, we think we have the schedules pretty much, but I, I just wasn't happy with the group. Again, it was a research group hired by DESI, and when we Zoomed with them, of course, they were home in their basement while we were at work. But anyway, so that's happening. Some elementary news, there's moving up days happening for grade five, and again, a lot of in-person stuff, so that's fun. Recognition, recognition nights are being scheduled. We have summer reading kickoff scheduled for June 7th. Field days and fifth-grade activities are being advertised from the schools. Kindergarten orientation is May 18th, and that will be in-person as well. And we're happy to say that we've brought junior achievement days back into the elementary school, so they're scheduling some of those for all grades. The district art show is coming up at the high school here for May 5th, I believe I have that date right. Some of the elementaries have decided to kind of do their own in-schools, to get their parents into the schools, because they haven't been in for so long, so I said that was fine. The middle school honor society, junior honor societies this week, April 27th at 6:00. And then you might have seen, I didn't send it out yet, Ross just sent it, but a lot of senior, the final days are being advertised, yeah, so lots going on with that. The final day for seniors is in May 27th, we've got June, June 1 is the awards night and the senior stroll, which they started, so that's really fun. And the prom is the second at Kirk Bray Country Club, and of course, there'll be an after-prom. And June 5 is graduation. And the last thing I wanna mention, something we're very, very happy, which matter of fact, I have a brochure for you guys, if you can just pass those out. I think I mentioned at a previous meeting that we've hooked up with a group called the Cook Center for Human Connections, and again, we've been meeting with them quite a bit. They seem to be very much on task as far as helping us get started. It's all about mental health, so what we're doing is, on May 4, as you see, we're gonna kick it off with a Zoom, we're advertising this, people can register, it's a virtual meeting, there are therapists available, they're gonna explain all that, there is ability to ask anonymous questions to these people, but that's just part of it, so that's the kickoff, and it'll explain what's happening. On, the other things we're doing is, there's a parent guidance, it's called parentguidance.org, which again, we'll put out, parents can go online, it's all free, there's courses they can take free. Things like helping your child when they're bullied, how digital media is changing our children's mental health. There's a plethora of opportunities on that particular website that they can just go through. Along with this kickoff, what happens next is we're going to continue with a series, and we'll be advertising this, but just so you have an idea, June 7, and they're all gonna be 6 to 7, and they'll be virtual, the session is gonna be protecting our children. And again, parents are gonna have the opportunity to anonymously ask questions, which can be then answered. You might have all been in sessions like that already, I know I do, with mass, et cetera. And the questions, they say, oh, a question is, and it might be questions that a lot of people have, and they have therapists they can be, you know, helping out. August 23 is going to be your child's anxiety, we thought that'd be kind of good getting kids back to school. And then October 18, once we get started, it's gonna be one that's very, very sad that we have to do, but how parents can help prevent suicide, giving people skills and ideas, and, and also, the last thing I'll mention, you can tell, we're very happy about this, is we are going to provide parents the opportunity to sign up for individual coaching sessions with a therapist. It's like a once-a-week 30-minute session, and once they sign up, they can just do it, it's completely anonymous, and we, we're just gonna offer that opportunity. So we, we just thought this was a fantastic opportunity for parents with the mental health issues and things that are happening, and our staff will get a little bit of PD on this as well. Matter of fact, the, I'm not sure if they met with our social workers already and our guidance, but we were setting up a meeting, I know Lori Joden, Joden was working on that, so. Anyway, this will be going out on our Facebook page and Home in the Parent Backpack, the newsletter thing. And that's it. That's for you.
That's fantastic.
Lots of stuff.
Lots of stuff, Kathleen?
That's fantastic, that was, but I have something to share. I'm also very excited, although it's the day after, so on, on May 5, I'm excited to share that the Special Education Parent Advisory Council is hosting a topic entitled, well, I modified it, but Life Post-Pandemic Healing Our Hearts, Our Minds, and Our Relationships. You know, it's about, you know, the past two years have been rough for everyone, and just the mental health challenges, physical health, how we, you know, we're highly charged and emotional, right, as a community. And we invited Maria Tricario, she's a registered nurse, she holds lots of, lots of degrees, and she's a nurse administrator, educator, and consultant, and her areas of expertise are communication, problem-solving, grief mitigation, program development, leadership, and ethics. And so she's gonna come offer some tips and strategies and some good, just stuff for those of us who are just reeling with exhaustion, overwhelm, worry, fear, to name a few things. And, you know, the reason we thought this was important is that, you know, we've, we're all at that point, right? Our students, our educators, our community, hopefully, I'm excited for it to be a reset button, so that we can see each other again, and start having kind and thoughtful conversations and feeling good about how we are and our, and our standing. So I'm really excited, you can find, I've shared it on Facebook today, I'll tweet it, I guess, but the Dartmouth CPAC Facebook page has like an event where you can get the link, and it's via Zoom, 6 to 7 on May 5, so I'm so excited about that.
Anybody else, any questions, comments for the superintendent?
Not for the superintendent, sorry.
Whatever.
I was just gonna note, for any of our educators who are watching, that the grant, the call for grants for the Dartmouth Education Foundation is open. The deadline for grant applications is May 15, so we'd love to see great applications from all of our schools.
Good, thank you for doing that. Mr. Oliver?
I just have two quick things for future meetings, agenda items. The next time we go into executive session, I was wondering if we could just add the topic of school security? I did have a couple of questions, so if we could add that to exec, executive session. And in addition, now that we're kind of open, and, you know, hopefully, the pandemic is slowly winding down, it'd be nice to see central office, as well as maybe some building representation back at our school committee meetings, kind of like prior to COVID. Just sometimes things come up.
I just wanna say you need to knock on wood, 'cause the last time we said that, I think Mr. Michaud was here, and we were like, have some time off, have a great vacation.
I know.
Don't jinx us.
It's, it's so true, but yeah, just.
Reset button.
When things come up, it would be nice to have some representation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Yes, I'm good with that.
That's all I have.
We can do that.
We can do that.
Okay. Yeah, a couple, a couple of things that I have, I know she talked about it. And we got our invites tonight from the theater company for Shrek the Musical Thursday, Friday and the two matinees on Sunday, Saturday, I should say, that'll be good. Do we have a time that Ms. Waite and I, now, are they going to interview us individually or is it?
No, you'd be together. I'll send you tomorrow. I don't, yeah.
No, no, that's fine. No, that's fine. Okay. But is, you know.
Did I tell you the school?
No.
No, I didn't.
You said, nothing.
Oh, no.
Just, just, just like, you know.
Well, hopefully, yeah.
When can you be, you know?
Okay.
Preferably this day.
Yeah, because it was the fourth or the fifth.
Send it to you tomorrow. I'll, as soon as I look at it, I'll get to it.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. That's fine. Do we have to be nice to them?
No.
No, okay.
Say good things about us.
Oh, that's not a problem. That's, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
Second one, right, the, the fourth.
Tracy sent it, look, I think Tracy sent it to me.
Okay. That's fine. Send it, forward it for tomorrow. That's fine.
It's the fourth.
Don't.
The fourth at eight. Says at least three members. We told them we can't have three because that's a quorum.
We can't have three because that's a quorum.
So the four, 8 o'clock on the fourth at the high school.
At the high, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. AM.
Okay.
Paper fried and bacon and eggs or? Probably not. They probably want us to buy.
Yeah, she just said the same thing, 8 o'clock on Wednesday.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Yep.
And again, just a, a, congrats to the Color Guide for their outstanding performance out in Dayton, Ohio, and also our indoor percussion that took third place and our wins that took second place last night. Their first year.
First year.
First year doing WGI competition. So congratulations to, to the, all those students for what they've done. I know our fall, our spring sports are going gangbusters, they're doing well, so very impressed. So I wish them well, so. All right. Our next meeting is May 9th.
Yep.
And I guess we're going to meet.
The town hall.
The town hall. We're going to meet at 5:30 in the planning board room. Dr. Jenkins.
I spoke with Ms. Gunther, who can speak to you about, and Dr. Gifford can fill you in about, we need to do an executive session after that. So I wonder, to Mr. Oliver's request, do we want to do, is it pressing? Do we need to do that?
No, it's not pressing.
Because we're going, I, I just wanted to sort of maybe get that out because we are going to need to do an executive session.
Yeah, that's fine.
After that one, but we can put that for the next one.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
That's fine. No problem. All right. Anything else? Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Oliver, second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Good evening and be safe.